Ding ding. We'll have to be needing orders. Would you please rise or welcome everyone to the April 14, 2020 City Council meeting out here on the Southland Court at City Hall. Would you please rise for the Budge of Legits, Lord's Prayer, and all of us out for our first sponsors, the most deserving, Eric Grant.
Welcome to the Legits, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Biden. Stand if you'd like, stand if you'd like. For the court please hold. I don't know if you're going out here. You were emailed March 10th, February 13th, March 18th, 28 minutes. I have a motion to adjourn. All three sections. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Trolley, second party. This is this votes. Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same side? Motion carries. The chair notes specification has been made regarding compliance with the rules of the implications of this meeting. We have no other questions, no further comments. Really, I don't have anything we're doing this meeting up here because everything's going on. I'm trying to do the social distancing. There we do have amendments to the 2020 municipal council. We do have amendments to the rules of the council.
Yeah. Counsel, you're seeing by email and hard copy amendments to the rules of council to make it easier to meet. It's a little difficult to handle. It's a little bit difficult to talk to office members. It's a right tax being an addition to all four of the meetings. I'll create it. The needs of council, committee, state emergency, governor, uh, maybe production remotely with the need of internet or teleconference provided by state law. The president of council shall determine the physical location of a regular meeting of council or electronic method by which a regular meeting of council will take place during the state of emergency. The president of council may change the date, hour, or regular meeting of council. The business agreement number two, any changes in meeting date, time, or location shall be as important, shall be as important to the rules of the council, the location of meetings in public, in this media, and shall be our responsibility to ensure. The special committees of council shall be held as needed and necessary and shall be followed in the same order as described in the committee. The present council will determine the physical location of the special meeting of council or electronic method by which the council, special committees of council, take place during the state of emergency. The president says that the president of town, John St. Doris, our council during the state of emergency. The fundamental version is we empower this to determine where, whether in person or electronic method, depending on the content. And then we may be able to change it because some is on, some is unavailable. Lack of form, we can adjust, and then we'll still get a work. That's my trusties of government that are here with us. Our during state of emergency, once the line gets rid of it, she ends that. So.
As much as we feel, we'll say goodbye to the community. We did so. Who was, who was, he added, give us twenty five. Go through the total roll. Brian Hovis?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Mark Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gellman?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I ask the first two of us together. That's the first thing that we go together. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be. That's really all it is. There's.
Thank you. I'll be free. I'm just really, I'm not sure it's time to ask that you all the courage that's been to us to abide by the stay at home and social distancing order, the president of governor, the wine, the health, the house. If I asked this last month, I would have taken this starting order, taking over the rules of the mayor of town. Although when I left, there was this flooding, you had that global pandemic.
And I was worried about the flooding.
Just nothing on, two things going on. The seasonal pump has been put in by the jet of stress. Derickage has been removed or soon will be removed around the armory for high water. Pretty soon, within the next week or so, another pump will be installed at Laurel in front of PC Black's, that has LA ice in that area. That's kind of a public-private partnership with the development that's going in in that area. The Jefferson Street project is progressing well. There have been some minor pickups, but expected when you dig into dirt, it hasn't been tested in sixty, seventy years, but that's, that's progressing. I think actually a little bit ahead of schedule, whatever. There's been a lot of traffic to deal with. Having coysided discussions with folks on finding funding for Lake Shore Drive and storing up that, we're to the point now where we're talking with ODOT and their Department of Mines, why are the birds getting water?
Yeah.
Tracy, do a video of the birds.
The pier walkway is still progressing. We're, we've come across a pretty good financial pickup with that one with respect to some permits that the US Army Corps of Engineers may require. Frankly, if that happens, it won't happen because it's several hundred thousand dollars, but we think we can get them to away that. You will see some digging taking place up there. You have to identify the location of the original wall, so that will take place. The wetlands project is put on hold. It's, it's going to happen. It's just waiting until the state of emergency lets in the main contractor coming to come out of state and they can't come into state and wait fourteen days to continue the work. Those wooden blockages that are up there, you know, it always amazes me that a snowplow in the county, they're plowing a township road, they have to lift up the plows right on the state highway, right on the county highway to get back to a township road, and they can plow the state. Well, that's a federal project. As a city, we can't move those. So again, the main contractors from out of state, they're trying to find one from Ohio to try to have a name up there. No local will be able to put a different location because they're gonna bring them down towards the project that they're starting by cable. So. We, we get the wetlands in front of the remote position to apply for a plan to take care of the, the, the cable that's been exposed as well as taking some repairs for the spillway for the damage to the high water. The infrastructure project that we're still moving forward with, we'll see some information from you there. If there's any positive that comes out of this whole COVID-19 issue, we've obviously seen a first stimulus package that appears to be a potential break in terms of second stimulus package last night several years ago, for those of you that know each other now, during the great recession. We have some shovel ready projects on the books here for Clinton and when Obama, the Obama bucks came through, Third Street and Second Street were able to be funded through that mechanism. We make that stuff, so the current Trump, Trump bucks are a trillion dollars, always coming, and certainly have a, hopefully have a position for some shovel ready projects to apply for some of those things that are added for, maybe some other things in our community. If you could remind folks utility bills, our water and sewer bills, just because you can't turn water off, and just because they can't turn electric off and gas off, it's a free pass. Still need the state to bill, contact the cities, I'll set up A and X here, here, there, and there, COVID-19. If you don't contact the city, late evening, still the, all that, there's still the help. We put some information out on the city's local Facebook sites, on the city's website this coming week. I just looked earlier today, it's gonna be a front page article on the weekend, so we're trying to get the people involved on the front end there. Just a saying thank you to all the city employees that is racing you tirelessly. We came up with a really good plan to, to first protect our troops and secondly, get things done. We're gonna come out of this a different world, but in the meantime, we still need to provide the services at the level that the citizens are, are expecting. And we think we've got a sound policy going with social distancing and spreading the truth out and about assigning of specific vehicles and passing things to, by still making all that other, that other fun stuff. As you know, we gave you some stuff in front of you related to city, city taxes. The county, state has already pushed, pushed it back to the fifteenth, we're asking that you endorse that as well. You know, you all know I make my living from second homeowners and visitors, but I, at this point, I've gotta concur with the visitors bureau and other leaders in our neck of the woods saying, you know, we love you, we appreciate you, just stay the hell away from out, plan your trip, and then, and then come back when it's, when it's safe. Some events in the community that the Operation Love Bunny, that some of you participated in, others participated a little bit more than, than others. I can't say who was Easter Bunny because Santa Claus never gives away secrets, but it was someone sitting at the circus. That, that, actually, I was overwhelmed at the, the number of people that, that were out about it. It was a little encouraging that hopefully when this is all over, people will come out and, and visit this area and do things in the parks and so forth. So that was, that was needed. That was an abridged version of something we had planned, started to organize a week earlier. We got everything set with four or five different agencies, six or seven different creatures and animals and houses. And then the next day, the governor and the president said, nah, this next week's gonna be a fun, 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 fun. The Sutton Center, you know, most of us have been able to attend our Public Works Services, Department of Labor, Ministry of Industry, Association of Captain Dowder, at nine o'clock every Sunday morning at the Sutton Center in the Department of Labor, providing additional service. We was having the opportunity to participate in that last weekend, it was, it was pretty neat, pretty neat. A lot of people have been asking about the Walleye Festival. Strange Week, Florida is meeting on Thursday. Tracy, I had talked about that, probably not going to happen as, as we know it this year. Likewise, the Fourth of July festivities have been canceled, were postponed. Right now, we're targeting August 1st as a, as a reason for the Fourth of July. A lot of that can depend on when all this stuff is lifted, when we can get back before a hundred, it's a time limit, so that'll be, we're targeting August 1st. And finally, I just think we'll take this moment to wish my, my daughter happy twenty seconds for a minute. Glad for her. Thank you. I mean, the question was, is there gonna be another date for the Walleye Festival? That was, that was plan A, I'm talking with the folks at Main Street Chamber. The difficult thing is, most of the vendors and live folks have their season already planned out, and there's no available dates in the future, so as a break.
I would like to review.
Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah.
Actually, I was, when I pulled up here, I was on the, the phone with the Board of Directors for the Ohio Festivals and Events Association out of Jackson, Ohio, and we were just talking about their festival down there, festivals all over the place. Most, most festivals in the state of Ohio, even up to and including the middle of June, have been, have been canceled. Side note, the civilian marksmanship program in the next three weeks are gonna make the decision on whether or not to cancel the National Right Wing Festival. As you all know, the biggest weekend in American history was canceled. That, that would take multi-million dollar debt to, to the local economy. That was, that was huge. We just hope this, this gets over and we get back to some, some.
Did I talk to you today? Um, auditor, he submitted his question, reports, remarks, and he's got one, and we've got his first one. He did not fly him. Colson, you have not gave anything?
Not good. Mayor covered pretty much everything, thank you.
Uh, committee reports, this one? Counsel, you were emailed, all the correspondence listed, the month end reports, March 12th, Mr. Hatfield, Department of Energy report, 2019, Department of Health, just reported in 2019, pretty much all of that, just goes back to that, the US, United States, paper to work. They've asked, they've submitted, and asked for approval. That's something we want to do. I hope you'll make through our, 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 our,[887.12]